I like it better without the glass, don't you?
Yeah.
My hearing is good. I thought I needed my hearing. I'd like to call to order the October 21, 2025, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Jean Marseille Jr.
Present.
Patrick Mayfield.
Present.
Steven Myers.
Present.
Peter Piffco.
Present.
Deborah Raine.
Present.
Sam Fish.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Will Corrente and Tanyo Kusakian are not present.
Next order of business is approval of the September 16, 2025 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval. So moved. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Good evening, Board. Angela Van, Assistant Development Services Director. See if we can get you caught up to what's happened since the last, um... Several planning board meetings. First case was across the North Flagler Overlay District, which you guys heard several times through workshops and/or through adoption. This was in the north end of the city. And it basically established an overlay that limited the height and setbacks. Height to approximately 300 feet with setbacks. It also established FAR requirements and included some design elements to help control some of the development along the North Flagler Drive. And the City Commission heard this second reading at their September the 2nd meeting and approved it by a vote of five to zero. You heard it in July of this year, and you approved it by seven to zero vote. Next property is 2410, 2460, 2508, North Australian Avenue. This was from a city-initiated property, a portion of a city-initiated property, which is right here, and other private properties. Was for a flood, future land use change from CS and commercial to multifamily. And again, for rezoning to consolidate the whole entire site from recreation, open space, and neighborhood commercial to MF32. This was again, for a project, for an affordable housing project for the breakers. You heard this on July 15th, you approved it by seven to zero vote, and Commission approved it as a second reading on 29th of September. No, it's not City Place. Apologize for that. This is basically also the north end of the city where we had applicant, um, Hizinger, who's come through and bought several single-family lots in the area north of 40th Street, uh, east of Spruce and the north end. So this ordinance created new single-family regulations, in particular for these, uh, these lots as shown on the picture, which are dealt with some reduced setbacks, some side setbacks, rear setbacks, also some, um... Some, um, design, minor design elements and all. You heard this at your July 15th meeting, you approved it by a vote of five to two, and Commission approved this also on September the 2nd by a vote of five to zero. I think I've caught you up. Uh, that concludes staff presentation. One thing I need to make a couple of corrections on the agenda. For Planning Board case number... The first case was just being removed. It was not advertised, so case number 1974 will just be removed off the agenda. No advertising, no motion required, and we are not going to hear case, code revision case number 2510. And again, just been removed off the agenda. There was no advertising, right?
Advertising? Is there advertising?
Continue.
But was it advertised?
Oh, okay. Well, continue it to the next meeting.
Okay. I think we will. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
That's it.
Anything else on your report?
Excuse my report, yes.
Okay. First, let the record reflect that during her remarks, Will Corrente joined us. All right, um, I believe, Mr. Thomas, for the continuance, we need a motion. Is that correct? Okay. So we're looking for a motion to continue code-division case 2510, I guess to our next, next meeting? Is that sufficient? Do you want a date?
Twenty...
Next meeting? Thirty days?
Continue. Continue.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. All right. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none, then becomes the declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by saying, with respect to all matters being heard this evening, I have had no ex parte communications, I received no written communications, I have conducted no investigations, I made no site visits, I received no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? And Sam, let me start with you, please.
Uh, as relating to all matters on tonight's agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made any site visits, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As it relates to all matters on the agenda this evening, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. And I do request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all matters in tonight's agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not had any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all matters on tonight's agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investig- investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
With respect to all of this evening's agenda items, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the swearing-in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you. You may be seated. That then brings us to Planning Board case and Planning Board case number 1231P. May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you. Evening, Planning Board. Tyler Woolsey with Shuts &amp; Bowen on behalf of the applicant. I know the agenda is shortening up tonight, so I won't prolong it any more than I need to. I am excited to be able to present this for you tonight. Almost a year ago to the day, this application, the initial application for Family Church RPD was before this board. So I'll give you a little context and then run through the amendments that we're proposing now. For context, the site is located just south of downtown on the South Flagler Corridor, where many folks are familiar with the Bristol, Forte, La Clara, South Flagler House, which is going up now, PBAU. This site lies right in the center of all the action. Here you see the subject property. It's just shy of 10 acres. And tonight, we're here to request your recommendation of approval for a major amendment to this RPD. Now, most of the time when we come for a major amendment, there is a laundry list of asks, and they tend to be substantial. In this case, the major amendment is dictated by slight changes to previously approved waivers, which I'll walk you through. Here you see the previously approved development plan. Just a color concept. You'll see as I work through this, this in large part continues to be, you know, an accurate development plan, subject to a few minor modifications. So the purpose of what we're here tonight to propose are enhancements to the architecture of both of the residential towers approved on the south side of the project. You might recall that the north half of the project is the continued home of the family church that has been there since the early 1900s, in the community since early 1900s, and this location since the 60s. They are currently under renovations for the existing worship hall that is to remain. We are not proposing any substantial change to that site. They are moving into construction drawings. What we are looking to do on the towers on the south side of the site is equalize the height, where the south tower was previously approved at 28 stories and the north tower at 32. We're looking to transfer essentially two floors to the north, to the south, equalizing them both at 30 stories. And so you see that reflected here, a 23-foot decrease of the north tower, a 26-foot increase in the south tower. One point that I'd like to make is that overall, the maximum building height on the site has come down by 19 feet as a result of this equalization. And then one other exciting element that I'll show you is that the west podium here, where previously only half of the roof of that podium was programmed with amenities, we have now fully programmed that rooftop and enclosed that roof, and I think in a very effective way. So touching quickly on the equalization of the towers, on the left-hand side of your screen, you see the current approval, both the differential in tower heights, as well as the previous architecture. On the right-hand side of the screen, you see that equalization in tower height, both coming in just shy of 330 feet, as well as what I think is, is a very meaningful update to the architecture, enhancing both the tower design as well as the wrap of that east podium fronting Flagler here. This view obviously is from the intercoastal. And what they've done here, I think, is a very effective merging of the podium design, raising that same, you know, language of architecture in the horizontal and the vertical articulations through the tower, where, you know, we did hear some feedback that the previous approval was a bit disconnected in the podium facade versus the towers. And so here you see a little bit more detail there. You see the difference in the wrap of the podium fronting Flagler on the left versus what we're moving to on the right-hand side of the screen. There remains both vertical and horizontal articulation. The proposed design mimics a certain type of wave feature, if you will, along that Flagler frontage to the podium. And then that same articulation is carried through the glass and the vertical and horizontal planter breaks that you see through the tower. Moving to the west podium update, on the left-hand side of the screen, you see there, what's marked out in the big X was, you know, the lower level of parking that was exposed to the sky. There were minimal amenities programmed on the eastern, you know, let's call it third of that podium. Today, we're proposing a fully amenitized podium roof deck with multiple courts, significant landscaping and a walking path around the periphery. Similarly, we are proposing an update to the amenity deck on the east podium. Not necessarily as substantial. It was already fully programmed with amenities, but you do see the differential between the previously approved on the left and the currently proposed with the expanded pool, adding both the relaxation element of the pool and the lap pool, as well as dispersing the landscaping throughout some of the cabana and lounge areas to create, you know, smaller pockets of privacy. Getting into the nitty-gritty, this table here represents the previously approved waivers, of which there were seven. This application today, as mentioned, is a major amendment because it does affect previously approved waivers, namely the first two. The first being the minimum acreage for an RPD, where the code does require 10 acres. The project was approved for just over 9.6. This really is a ministerial, you know, clean above the application. You might recall that Chadbourne Court previously terminated into this site, and as part of this overall approval, that was abandoned. And so what we're doing here is reflecting the abandonment and the inclusion of that acreage in the overall project area. So the extent of that waiver is decreased from the previous approval. And then the second item is the building height side setback relationship waiver. So, you know, you'll obviously know that the, you know, setbacks here in RPD are dictated by the height of the building. And so naturally, with the increase of the south tower by 26 feet, that increases the setback requirement by one-half, so 13 feet. So as a result of that, it does impact that waiver. Now, I will point out, and I'll show you here in a moment, that the south tower, the architecture of that building has changed in such a way that one setback, you know, from the ground plane is increased slightly, while another is decreased slightly. So a bit of a proportional change there that I'll walk you through. First, just touching on and reflecting that abandonment of Chadbourne Court, which you see carved out of the site on the left side, where we came in and asked for the site area at 9.6 acres. Today, with the abandonment of that, we're at 9.897, as close as you can get to that 10 acres east of 95. And then here, getting into the side setback issue, so this is the approved plan, and I draw your attention to the southeast corner of the south tower there, where the revision cloud exists. So there are two setbacks here that we called out, and we were very conservative and completely transparent in calling out every setback that we could on the initial approval. And so that's the result. You're seeing this change here. Currently, that side corner is at 52 feet 9 inches, whereas that east side of the building is 55 feet 6 inches. Today, we're proposing a slight decrease in that corner setback, which reflects on the upper-level deck, where a trellis feature, architectural feature protrudes at the roof of the podium. That does decrease slightly by 3 feet 2 inches at that corner. But however, if you'll see, and I'll flip back just to take a look at the outline of that south tower, you see it does bulge out in the current approval towards that east property line, where today, you see that architecture curve inwards to create, you know, slightly increased setback there by 6 feet 2 inches. I do also point out, one of the changes that's being made is to the west podium setback, where there is no change to the actual setback. It remains at 25 feet from that south property line. The height of that podium, as it was programmed with amenities, as you might imagine, the structural element, it resulted in a 7-inch increase in the height of that podium. So a 4-inch increase in the required setback. So we believe, and your staff concurs, that these waivers, as amended, do continue to comply with the review standards. And we continue to agree with all the previously approved, previous conditions of approval, rather. And your staff is recommending approval. So we would, uh, request your recommendation of approval to City Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Go ahead, Peter.
Just said of interest, what was the catalyst for the change of design?
So as they finished up, you know, design development, and we moved through the approval process, they obviously went to market. We heard feedback both through the approval process, as I mentioned, that there was a bit of a disconnect in the architectural language of that podium wrap fronting Flagler and the residential towers as it carried vertical. So both from market feedback and from that feedback that we heard, as the architecture team moved into construction drawings, they looked to address that. And from, from everything that we've heard, both from, from the market that the client's speaking with, as well as staff, we think it is a nice blend and a much better way to address the architecture throughout the project.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you so much.
Just one question. Just out of curiosity, what was that reason for the height change? Was that just market forces again?
Exactly right, yeah. So as we looked at the differential in the tower height, you know, there obviously is sensitivity around building height, and as we looked at the, you know, marketability of those, you know, northern, you know, verticalmost units, it made sense to equalize those towers out.
All right, thank you. May we hear from staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, Lucy Centine, Senior Planner, Development Services, for the record. The applicant did a very adequate presentation tonight, so therefore I'm just gonna glance it over, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be open for... Bear with me for one second.
Sure.
Sorry about that. That was the wrong PowerPoint slide. Okay, once again, Lucy Centine, Senior Planner, for the record, Development Services. So the applicant did a great presentation tonight. I'm gonna glance it over through the PowerPoint slide. So as the applicant stated, this is for a major amendment to the Family Church RPD. The app, uh, this application was approved by the City Commission on November 25, 2024, under Resolution Number 225-24. It was approved for a future land use amendment for multifamily. It was approved for an RPD, and also received approval for the development regulations. So the applicant is requesting a major amendment with waivers, as he stated before, specifically for waiver number one and two. Waiver number one is for the residential tower heights and south setbacks. And, and waiver number one, reduce acreage waiver. And also, the applicant's proposing change to architectural components, amenities, extension of the tennis court on top of the garage. There has been no change to the existing historical Baptist church building. As you can see, this PowerPoint slide, this is just a glance it over of the whole development. The top is the approved plans. The bottom one is the proposed RPD amendment. As the applicant stated before, the southern portion of the tower has been amended to accommodate additional, um... Building heights to equalize both heights at the same. As you can see, the east elevation, there has been a, a change also to the west elevation, west, southwest elevation, located towards the garage. As you can see, it looks a much better product, as you can see on the, on the bottom. This, through the south elevation, it shows that canvas to the southwest elevation shows a much better product that actually encompass the entire structure and provides buffering also to the other properties around. And that's where it accommodates the tennis court and the proposed area that's gonna be open-air. The east side remains the podium. The podium has not received any, any change, the east podium side. The amenities have received some change as the applicant stated. The overall architectural seems to be a much better product overall. The architectural lines seems much more smooth, and it, it has a better dialogue with the, with the community. The staff has issued concerns during the approval times regarding the honeycomb type of architectural style that was not very in relation to what we have in our city. And I believe the architects and, and the applicant heard our voices and changed the, the product, which looks much better now. Moving forward, as the applicant stated before, the waiver setbacks, staff has no issues with the waiver setbacks. The only two waiver setbacks that actually changed was the, the one on the south tower portion of the east podium side, the diagonal setbacks. I mean, there has not been much change there. It did not negatively impact the existing landscape buffering and the sidewalk. They all remain as is on the property. It looks actually a much better product. So as I already stated before, for the waiver amendments, staff has no objection to waiver number one for the minimum acreage for the RPD, as well as waiver number two for the building heights and impact with the side setbacks. Staff recommends approval for Planning Board case number 1231P with conditions. Based on the findings that the petition meets all the zoning and land, land development regulation requirements. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions of staff? Go down this side. Any questions?
What are the conditions? You said it's a, you're recommending approval of conditions?
Yes. Uh, so the conditions are actually enclosed in Resolution 225-24. The, the conditions remain the same as previously approved, and they are for the record under, under the previous resolution.
So we approved this once before, and the same conditions would carry over?
Correct. The same, exactly the same conditions. Actually, matter of fact, on page number two, that is on your desk right now, shows the recommendation for approval, and actually states that recommendation under the Resolution 225-24.
Any other questions of, of staff? All right, thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application?
Anybody wanna buy a unit?
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any concerns or reservations about this application? And if not, oop.
My only comment, I think both iterations were equally beautiful. I think the height differential was more interesting originally, but I understand it's more lucrative to be able to sell greater height.
Any other thoughts? And if not, I'm looking for a motion.
All right. You convinced me. I move that the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval of Planning Board case number 1231P and approval with conditions for our request by David Harrison, agent of Related Company, and Tyler Woolsey, agent of Urban Design Studios, on behalf of First Church One LLC, the owner, for a major amendment to the Family Church Residential Plan Development RPD to allow changes to the previously approved site plan with waivers for a mixed-use development consisting of a new church, school campus, multifamily residential units with two parking garages and restaurant uses. The motion is based on the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes finding and fact that the application meets all the requirements for approval of the RPD of less than it require 10 acres, specifically 9.897 acres, set forth in Section 94-207(c)(2) of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and development regulations.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
I said we already have a second, but we have a third. Thank you. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to Planning Board case number 1617G. May we hear from the applicant?
Does this have a mouse or just a...? Oh, there it goes. Good evening. John Schmidt, agent for the applicant. Just have a few quick slides for you this evening for this major amendment. This is, um, this was an approval that was at Broward, called Broward Block. It's located at the corner of Piccadilly and Broward Avenue. 2012, it was approved by City Commission. 2017... 2017, we did a minor amendment. 2020, 21, we did a plat to put all seven lots together and it's currently built. You see the, you see the building on the bottom slide, so it's currently up and operating. The area that we're going to be discussing tonight is frontage, about 1,700 square feet directly on Piccadilly, which was the offices, kind of a leasing office that we're looking to convert. So we're looking to convert 1,700 square feet of existing leasing office to retail space. So we're going to put more active use along the streetscape. That's our first request, so it's converting this, this office space right now into retail and commercial. Pretty straightforward and there's an elevation of the existing building and the affected area highlighted in the, in the elevation there. Our second one is that because we switched from office to retail, it required a loading space, so we're asking to utilize a loading space within the building using, you know, van and, and regular spaces to act as the loading zone. So that's our second request. Because it was a, it generated a little bit more traffic, instead of a minor amendment, it was a major amendment, so that's why we're here tonight. We meet all the standards of the major development regulations, staff's recommending approval. If you have any questions, we're here to answer. I have the own, us here, as well as the owner representative.
All right, thanks so much. Any questions of the applicant?
Yes. I'm trying to understand how this convenience store is going to operate. Are people going to come in and park inside the building and then is there an entrance from the parking garage?
It, it's not a convenience store, so it's retail, it's going to be retail space, retail or commercial space. We haven't identified what it is, but I don't think it'll be a C-store there. But it, it is up in Northwood, which is a very walkable community, and there is also on-street parking.
Oh, so you don't know if it's going to be a convenience store or at this stage of the game?
No. That's correct, that's correct.
Oh, that's, all right.
I mean, it's pretty small for a convenience store, but yeah.
Yeah, it is small.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was only concerned about, you know, the noise, being residential all the way around and whether, whether we were now looking at restricting operating hours.
No, not, not at all. I mean, and, and again, there's on-street parking and it's really becoming a nice walkable community.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Don, thank you. May we hear from staff?
Good evening, Planning Board members. For the record, Kevie DeFranks, Senior Planner with the City's Development Services Department. And I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendation for the subject agenda item, which includes the major amendment with the variance of the Broward Block Development Significant Impact, DSI. The applicant's agent thoroughly presented the request and staff does not object to the variance requests from the loading space requirement. And staff finds the request complies with the amendment standards found in the City's zoning and land development regulations. And therefore, staff recommends approval of Planning Board Case Number 1617G. And I would also like to submit into the record updated sheets to the staff report, which includes Page One and the last two pages, which are the motion pages for how the Planning Board will have to vote on the subject agenda item.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you.
But what happens if we don't like this?
Okay, any questions of staff?
One question. Is there any other retail currently in the building or is this?
No, this is an introduction of new non-residential usage. Square footage.
Any other questions of staff? If not, would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Any concerns, any issues?
No.
And if not, we'll look for a motion for approval.
Motion.
I think you have to read it out here.
Would you like me to read it? Okay. I move that the Planning Board approve Planning Board Case Number 1617G, DSI 2412005, 005. A request by Matt, I'm not going to pronounce your name, of Smith Nichols, on behalf of POTP LLC for a major amendment to the Broward Block Development of Significant Impact, DSI, with a variance from the City's zoning and land development regulations to convert 1,700 square feet of existing ground-level leasing and management office space to commercial retail space within the Curry Mixed Use District Core Two, CMUD Core Two zoning districts. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes finding and fact that the application complies with the required standards in Section 94-32A of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Okay. There are no conditions, correct, on this one? Okay, that's good. We have a motion, have we a second? Motion and second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much. That then brings us to Planning Board Case 1617G.
I'm so sorry.
No.
If that's what we did, then we're at, is that 950 followed by many, many Js? We need a better numbering system, guys. It's 950 J, 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 J.
J to the ninth power.
We don't have that many cases here.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Roger Ramdeen with the Office of Schutzenbowen, here on behalf of the applicant. And what you have here before you tonight is also a major PD amendment and it's for the 10-City Place 15-City Place project.
Just try and speak a little more, Mike, from having difficulty hearing it.
No worries. So yes, a major PD for the 10-15-City Place project. So as you may know, the site is located at the intersection of Rosemary and Hibiscus at the northeast corner, shown on the slide. And just by means of background, on January 22nd, 2024, the City Commission approved the construction of two office towers with a total of 744,492 square feet of Class A office space, about 64,000 square feet of retail, a six-level parking garage, basement parking under both towers, ground-level open space with a passageway connecting Hibiscus and Gardenia. And we were actually approved for six waivers as, as part of that previous approval. One of those waivers was for active use liners, which is what brings us back you, back to you tonight. So in summary, the request before you tonight is for three waivers. The first waiver is for an increase from 60% to 77% for the continuous building frontage without providing a planer break. That's only on levels three through five and only on the west tower. The other two waivers are related to reductions in the active use liners, and I'll get into details within the next couple of slides here. This is the overall site plan, as you may recall, it's two towers between Rosemary and the FEC Railroad, 10-City Place being the western tower and 15-City Place being the eastern tower, and the six-level parking garage located adjacent to the FEC Railroad. Now I'll get into the details of the waiver. So waiver one relates to the planer breaks. Basically, what the code requires are to provide planer breaks, so you have a disruption or break of the facade along the building frontage, along levels three through five. But what that does, and it, it actually, as part of the architectural design initially, we provided the planer breaks and there was an indentation that was part of the original building proposal that disrupts the floor plate within the office space. So what we're seeking to do is to eliminate just that break within the floor plate, but still provide these fins that gives you the, the visual architectural design of the planer breaks. And I'll show that to you as well. And the, the vertical fins is what I'm referencing. So this is what we're proposing to do, is basically to eliminate that indentation in these three locations along the interior floor plate of the office on levels three through five. And this better illustrates the, the before and after. So at the top, you see the current approval with the yellow boxes showing the indentations into the floor plate and the bottom showing what's proposed, basically eliminating that indentation into the floor plate. As it relates to the view from the outside, there's vert, there's, the minimus change, it's not even noticeable. As it relates to the active use liner, it's strictly related to Hibiscus Street, and this slide illustrates where we're showing the, the reduction. Basically, we are seeking a reduction on levels two and three from 52% as previously approved to the new 47%. I do want to mention that the, the reason for this change was, this, this request is as a result of the change from the now standard parking, I'm sorry, from the automated parking, the stackers, to this standard parking space. So we needed to provide some additional space on the, on the floor plates, and so it got cut in, basically cut into the active use liners. And I also want to mention that, as you see on this slide, the two corners do count to, well, they don't technically count towards active use, they are considered active use, but because they are less than 20 feet in depth, we cannot count it towards our active use. So we had to eliminate it. There's a minimum requirement of 20 feet for depth for active use. This, these renderings basically show you what the building is going to look like, there's next to no change visually on the outside, again, on these levels. The parking garage will still be screened by glass and you'll never know that there's parking behind these, behind the glass on these levels. And finally, the active use liner on, on Gardenia is subject to waiver three. There's no change here. And a little bit of background as to what's happened here, initially, we requested a 26% reduction for the active use liner, but the actual number is 25.7. Because we were, we rounded up, we now have to come back and get the exact waiver request, and that's where waiver three stems from. As part of the major PD amendments, we have to demonstrate compliance with Section 9432A. We believe that we comply with all the standards, staff concurs. And with that, I do ask your recommendation of approval for this request. Staff does support it with one condition of approval, that condition of approval being that we would work with staff to update the DRI calculation conversion chart, which we're going to work with staff on prior to being scheduled for the City Commission. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
Maybe, probably the staff, but maybe I'll ask you the same question. It was my understanding that the indentations are primarily for a solid wall, like a concrete wall, concrete block wall, but I never realized it also applied to a curtain wall.
And I, we, the architect of record is here to answer those specific questions, but it's my belief that the intent of the, the fins accomplishes the same intent of the planer breaks along that concrete wall. I could go back to that, that image if that helps. So the, as you can see from this image, you, you still get the illusion of the, you know, the breaks in the building with the use of the fins.
Any other questions of the applicant?
What, you said the standard parking versus the automated parking, so which one are you going?
We're proposing standard parking now. We originally got approved for stackers. With that change from the stackers to the standard, it requires a little bit more space to, for maneuvering of vehicles, and that's why we have to kind of reduce that active use.
But that also reduces the number of parking spaces or cars that can be parked.
We still comply with all the, we still comply, we're still providing all the required parking spaces. Under a separate application, we have a minor amendment with a slight tweak to that building, which doesn't come before the public hearing forum, and we're fixing those numbers.
Any other questions of the applicant? If not, thank, may we hear from staff?
Good evening, for the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. And Roger went over the gist of the application, you have the backup material. You did ask a few questions that I'll clarify. As far as the curtain wall, all building walls are required to have the planer break. This one's unique because they kind of just forced the three-foot gap in those curtain walls that you saw, that Roger showed, in the middle of the building, because you can't have more than 60% of your building without a planer break. Typically, people will do like four, 50/50 and they'll, they'll, they'll waiver that way. As you can see from this diagram, they have the curves on the end, so they meet the minimum 20% break that they're required to have. It just wasn't in a, they just had more than, they're now asking for more than 60% in a row. So that's really what the waiver is here, they do meet the minimum planer break amount, it's just how it's presented on the building. We typically don't see people doing curved buildings, we see them doing, you know, when you're doing block or anything else, it's a flat building, even the glass buildings we're seeing are cubes, and they just play with the variation of the cube on the floor plate.
I was surprised.
So that, that's what this one's about, and as the report says, staff does not object to this, the intent of it is met, while those are not. If those had been three-foot deep fins, we wouldn't be here talking because they would have been breaking the plane by more than three feet. The fins are only two feet deep, so they don't meet the three-foot break in that plane. And the plane can be broken back or forward, however you want to do that. As far as the question about the parking, and this, the original plan had been to do two, two-level lift or two lifts for each space. And when they got to the point of the approval of the building with a five-story garage, they, and started designing the project and talking to their valets, they realized a thousand parking, office parking spaces trying to put lifts that each one had to have a valet on was absolutely infeasible unless you had, you know, a thousand valets running around the building. So they came back in and got an amendment to raise their podium, and you guys looked at that last year and recommended approval, City Commission approved it. So instead of having those thousand spaces in a podium that's 10 stories or 12 stories tall, what they did was they cut into the building where it had been usable space before on the second and third levels, which had been, had been proposed to be more office space at the time. As part of that, it just mechanically trying to put, keep those liners in there at 20 feet deep, you saw the picture that Roger showed, really becomes for office space not very usable. And on the north side of the building, where they've eliminated it because they have, they do have the, the patio there that is set back, that was a waiver granted, set that back, so it's going to be less noticeable that there's not active use directly on the building wall, because it's not out to Gardenia. And those curtain walls that they're putting in, the spandrel glass, you're not going to be able to see through to see that that's actually parking, it's going to read just like the rest of the building. So that's why staff didn't object to that. They, and to address the condition, that's something we're working on through the, we need to get the, the plans that they have for, to actually get those extra parking spaces and all that square footage moved around. And then once we get those finalized, we can move on to City Commission, because those drawings actually have to be in with this, and they're wanting to have these approved to do those drawings. So it's kind of a, it came up during that review that there were some issues here that they wanted to change. It's a weird little disjointed process we've got, but as far as the application that you have in front of you for the changes to the waivers on the floors, staff found that those meet all of the eight amendment standards and is recommending approval. And they will maintain the conditions and waivers that they had in the, in the previous approval for the buildings that don't absolutely conflict with what you guys are recommending or approving if you do tonight. Are there any questions?
Any questions of staff?
Just one question, I'm assuming from the image here, nothing is changing at the pedestrian level?
No, the pedestrian level is going to stay the same on all, on both buildings, both towers, that is not being changed. I mean, just as part of this amendment, they are going to be moving out in the, there's a passageway between the two buildings, I don't know if you picked up on that, I don't know. I don't know what drawing Roger has here. So, okay, well, so if you see.
Between the two towers.
Yeah, so you see on the left-hand side of this drawing, they're actually moving that deck out a little further. Do you have one that shows that? So between the, there's a passageway that's going to be 40 feet wide, but they actually narrowed it down so that they have more of a cover. And so in this area here, this had been on ground level building coming out, and so they've actually pulled that back so that there's more ground level. It's now an arcade in there as opposed to the building pushed out. So that works a little bit better for the frontage, because there is going to be, while Roger says office towers, there's retail on the ground floors of these buildings is what the proposal is. So that will still be interactive with the pedestrian experience, both through the plaza, along Rosemary, along and Hibiscus, and to a lesser extent, Gardenia, which is more of the back-of-house features, which is kind of what it was when MovieCo was there as well.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? Please, one at a time. Three minutes only. We got to, we got to control this. All right, let's bring it back to the board. Any issues, any concerns? If not, looking for a motion for approval.
Motion.
Go for it.
You get to say the seven Js.
Hardest part of this application.
I moved at the planning board, recommend to the City Commission approval for planning board case number 950JJJJ.
One more.
J.
Stop stuttering.
A request by Roger Ramdeen of Shuts &amp; Bowen on behalf of C Block Development LLC for the approval of a major planned development amendment to amend the waivers approved as part of the Level 3 site plan.
It's different than what you're reading. That's why I gave it to you.
But you gave me planning board case.
Oh.
Twenty-five eleven.
Right, sorry.
Okay.
Keep going there.
Okay. Okay, site, site plan approved by resolution number 18-24 for the development of two primarily office towers at 550 South Rosemary Avenue within the City Place East sub-area of the City Place Commercial Plan Development. The amended waivers are to permit greater than 60% of the facade without a planer block break on the Western Tower along South Rosemary Avenue, and to reduce the amount of required active use along Hibiscus Street and Gardenia Street. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent, substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the applicable criteria in Section 94-32 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. And we have one condition.
What's the, sorry?
One condition.
Yes.
In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff report dated October 21st, 2025. I move that this condition is necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that brings us then to our only code revision case, because 2510 has been continued, so that's 2511. It's a city-initiated code revision case, and we're going to hear from Ms. Van.
Our new assistant.
I thought we were going to be here all night. We had six cases.
It was controversial.
Nothing was. We had no one here. No cards.
No.
Although someone may come on this one.
Sure, Angela Van, Development Service Director. This is code revision case number 2511, and it's a city-initiated request to, not only to the Code of Ordinances and the Zoning and Land Development Regulation to update and provide regulation for mobile vendors. Over the past couple of years, in 2021, Florida statute changed and now preempts municipalities from requiring a separate license and certain regulations for mobile vendors. But the statute does not prevent cities from regulating the location and associated operations of mobile vendors. And these proposed regulations, the regulation proposed is part of this text amendment case will allow the city to regulate and establish certain requirements. Just to give you an idea of what's a mobile vendor, you have different, let me wind it down a little bit. Oops, I'll go back. You have different mobile vendors.
You're making me hungry.
I'll go back. There you go. You have different type of mobile vendors. Okay, I don't know if I should do this. You have different type of mobile vendors. You have those that are the carts. You have those that are just stand, put up a tent, you see them selling. You have those that are actual full engaged trucks. So those are type of mobile vendors. You have hockdaw stands that we're talking about regulating for this text amendment. Now, the ones this text amendment would not regulate would be ice cream trucks, because they drive around in the city right of way. Therefore, you know, zoning code does not necessarily regulate the right of way, and the ice cream trucks. And also, you have some mobile vendors that are actually parked in a parking spot. They pay their meter and move every two hours. Again, this regulation will not regulate that. That's still be regulated by the City Code of Ordinances, because again, that's all in the right of way. These, these regulations are basically for private property uses. Just to give you a background and a brief, what we're talking about, we're talking about placement, operations, and procedures. For placement, overnight parking, as you've seen sometimes around the city, you've seen the trucks, they stay there, never move. This code will prohibit that. You have to move it every night, because again, a mobile vendor should be.
Mobile.
Contained, mobile, but contained within the truck. I mean, self, gas, electric, waters, all within the truck. You see some of the ones that are actually standing alone and plugged into the actual business, those technically by definition are not mobile vendors. So we're talking about, mobile vendors are the ones that are mobile and should be moved every night. No parking in required parking spaces, drive aisles, fire lanes, want to make sure that we clearly where they're going, 15 feet from many street intersections, so we want to clear our intersection space. No blocking in fire hydrant, ADA space, no parking on grass, unapproved surfaces, or in no parking zones or loading areas. So we want to basically redefine, if you get a letter, you can go in, if you have extra parking spaces on the site, the applicant have, you can go in those. Can't go and require parking, but you can go in the extra parking spaces that they may have of open area they may have, as long as it's not a drive aisle or a loading area. Operations, we basically want to make sure that the mobile vendor is responsible for cleaning up after themselves, so everything that should be removed when the mobile vendor leaves, as far as trash and everything related to it, all related. Signs should be affixed to the mobile vendor. There's no freestanding signs, sandwich boards, flags, balloons, streamers, all this stuff you see now. Basically, no. If you have a sandwich board sign, you have a sign, put it on your mobile vendor, people can read that. So trying to clear up the area that we see now all over the city with the flags and the signs and all. However, beverages can be sold with the appropriate license from the state. One thing we want to make clear, a caterer's license, because a lot of mobile vendors do special events, but you can't use your caterer's license to serve alcohol as part of your mobile business. It has to be something based on, from the state. And last procedures, provide a site plan showing location of a lease area. Want to see what you're leasing. What's the area you're leasing from the, and then the surrounding areas, where you leasing, where's the parking around there? Where's the drive aisles? Where's everything? So want a detail to see where you're actually going to make sure it's still safe for the other people who are visiting that property. And must have a sign, notarized, written permission from the property owner that you basically can be there. So that's just to give you a, just a rundown of the basic, what we're trying to do. Some of these are already in our city code today, but because of the state issues and changes, we're taking it out and actually going to put it in the zoning code, therefore be enforced by zoning. Staff recommends approval of code revision case 2511 based upon the findings that the proposed amendment will comply with all amendment standards found in Section 9432, the zoning and land development regulations. Staff be happy to ask any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Can you go, Angela, can you go back to the previous slide?
Okay, hold on. Which one? This one?
So I have a couple of questions. No parking in required parking spaces, drive aisles, or fire lanes. So it's obviously that these trucks would not be allowed downtown.
Say it again, sorry.
They won't be allowed downtown because there is nothing else.
Well, you have some parking, like you have some of the larger shopping centers that have excess parking. It's not, it's the required parking, not any parking space, it's required parking. So you have some, most businesses build more parking than is required by code. So what you're saying, you could go in a parking space as long as, when they give us a site plan, that the business can show that I have five extra spaces beyond what the code requires, they can go into those spaces.
Okay. That makes sense. The other one I was a little concerned about is there shall be no freestanding signs, sandwich board signs. Why, why is that an important issue?
Because right now, we get an issue with them just cluttering. I mean, you put up a sandwich board sign, then they end it with something else, and you put a balloon right there for somebody to notice a sandwich board sign. I mean, you can tell us why you think you have an issue, why they should have them. We can look back at it, but that's one of the things today that we want to do, because only sandwich board signs today only allow if you have a sidewalk cafe. That's where we own, we don't even allow sandwich board signs per se in the city, only with the sidewalk cafe. So we're saying that if you have self-contained, by the definition of the state of Florida, it's self-contained, everything should be self-contained on your truck. Therefore, you see some of them have a chalkboard on the side of their truck, and they write their menu down, because it's changed daily. That's something that they should have do, because it's all should be self-contained.
Ah, better pictures a thousand words, you know? Especially when you see a Cuban sandwich, you know? The other, last one is provide a site plan. Are we talking about a Google map that's marked up or an actual engineer-produced survey or produced site plan?
You know, it's relative. Some people are going to come in, and the owner may have a site panel survey that they still may have. We work with the applicant, they give us a Google map that shows they go in here and the area is clearly defined or something like that. We're not trying to put screen use regulations on them, but we just need to know what's there, what's existing on the site, where you're going, what's around it, so make sure you're not blocking a drive aisle, you're not by a fire hydrant, stuff that we need to see. So this depends on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
So on the, if a, if a food truck is located on private property, like a gas station or something like that, how does this code apply to that?
This only regulates private property.
This only regulates?
Only regulates private property. Everything else, the city code still will regulate anything on public property.
Okay. Like Peter, I don't have a problem with the sandwich boards, as long as they would be picked up at the end of the day when operations cease. I mean, you know, we're growing as a city, and the, these types of things that you see are things that you would see in New York, or one of the outer boroughs of Manhattan. But if the sandwich board is picked up at the end of the day when operations close and the trucks move, I don't really think that's a, a big issue.
Let's notice, the applicant take a look at it.
King, do you have a question?
Sure. So private property, you have an owner that extends an invitation for somebody to park there overnight. So we're regulating that any mobile vendor cannot have, let's say, a food truck parked at private property overnight? Is that what? So what if the mobile unit belongs to the property owner, they can't park it there overnight?
It just depends on, if you operate under these requirements, you have to move every night. He has a mobile vendor, he's storing. It's different between parking and storing. Now, if you're parking it overnight, if you're going to start storing, that gets into commercial vehicles and gets into screening, it just gets into another part of the code that will require that part of it. We originally had a provision that said you can do overnight, you can store it overnight, screen it, but our police department had an issue with that in terms of them trying to police some of the things and the issues that they've seen with mobile vendors and the trucks that stayed there. So that's why staff put no overnight parking. But again, if somebody, that's your property, you want to store stuff there, then it gets into storage.
Okay, but then if you have a lease, then you have also rights that would extend just as if you were the property owner. So let's say you're leasing that corner of the property, and you want to store your vehicle there, then, you know, how can we prohibit that?
Because the code right now, where the code is written, we're saying no overnight parking. You, you, you're coming under the mobile vendor requirement. You a mobile vendor. Based on what the state statute says, it specifically says you are self-contained, you are mobile, you're supposed to move, and that's the whole thing. I understand with some of the trucks may need to be stored, and they have to find a place to store them, but the whole idea is not to be stored where you actually operating. You should have someplace else to store them.
Okay, so, so if I own, you know, ABC Tacos, and I have a storefront, and within my storefront, I have a parking lot, but then I also do mobile catering and have a self-contained mobile catering unit, can you not store your, your vehicle?
But again, a self-contained mobile catering unit is not going to be out of your unit. It's going to be, because you got to have a commissary. So if you're doing a caterer, you got to have a building address in that plaza somewhere. So yes, I understand what you're saying, you got to have a building address to do your commissary there with a mobile catering service. So they will have, some of those do have trucks, some of those will do park, but they're not working out of their trucks. And they, at their address, they have a caterer business, and that truck is tied to their catering business.
Well, I know the commissary is just so that they have a place to, to sanitize, dump waste. It doesn't necessarily have to be on-site.
No, it doesn't have to be on-site, but it has to be somewhere.
Right, it could be, it could be 30 miles away.
But again, these are the ones that are over, you have, you have different categories of mobile vendors. You have caterers who has a truck, and they do from place to place to place. And most of those that you see, those are the ones, a lot of those are on public property or in private property. But again, just by looking at the code and what other municipalities have done in, in response to what the state statute did, most of them are saying no overnight parking, because they just want them there in terms of cluttering up. And our police department had, also had issues with it.
So there are other municipalities that have?
Yes. Yes, that basically after the state preempted a lot of things, then municipalities had to actually write regulations to regulate them. We can't regulate the operations per se, like, you know, grease trap and this and that, and that's all regulated to the state. But we can operate location and then what you put around you.
Okay.
So to your point, what I would suggest is that you clarify in this that if the identification of the mobile vehicle matches the business where it is parked, then it is allowed to be there and does not qualify as a mobile. So if Tulipan Bakery had a Tulipan truck that sits in Tulipan's parking lot, then that truck would not be considered a mobile unit under the context of this code.
Because they're not, they haven't given us a lease or anything, so they don't need a lease to operate, but I understand what you're saying. I understand.
Because then that would, that would not be punitive to businesses that have mobile vehicles that would actually, and have property to store that vehicle, to actually have to store it someplace else because of this code. Whereas if hypothetically McDonald's had a mobile truck and they were parked at Tulipan, then it would have to, the McDonald's truck would have to move at the end of the day.
No, I understand.
But.
I understand.
Yeah.
Good point. Make clarification.
So to continue with that, if you have a mobile unit that's at the location where their commissary that they're attached to is, can they park there?
Yes, as long as it's in the commercial district.
Are we satisfied that what we're proposing is, is not going to run afoul of the new state law? I mean, has it been looked at?
No, I mean, our city attorney will look at it and ensure that it's not running afoul before we.
That's the whole point of this, right?
The whole point of it, but no, we don't, we thinking in what we've seen with other municipalities have done and what. with other municipalities have done, and what's going on, and, because I think what the state was trying to do is keep this, keep the, because the city required a business tax, a license to operate. State also required them to have a, something from the department, I think it's business professional regulations, so they also had those regulations. So that's what, part of what the state was saying, we already regulate them, you don't need to come regulate them. But zoning is always still, zoning never went away. It's just how it got caught up in all the, where it, where it was written, so zoning kind of got lost in it. So we're just taking and clarifying the issues with zoning would regulate.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the, with the intent of it, but I do think it needs more refinement before we vote on it.
Refinement in terms of what?
Well, we had just talked about, what I had just suggested about, if it's a mobile vehicle attached to a business of the same branding and the same name, then it doesn't fall under this section.
Well, it says right now, I have to buy the site panel, show a lease area, a written permission from the property owner.
If I own, if I own a bakery, and I have a bakery truck, I'm not going to do a lease to myself for my bakery truck.
Yeah, for bakery truck, are you selling it outside of your bakery, or is it just sitting there?
It's just sitting there.
This, this is the operation of a business, a mobile business with somebody operated and selling.
Open for business, this one's been parked.
Yes, this is somebody operating and selling.
His example is, if there's a Tulipan truck that goes out there, it's governed by this, and when it parks at night, whatever, at their own, that's not a violation. So we don't need to change anything, is what I'm hearing, is that this is already allowed.
But the language has to be clear, because just looking at this plain text, you could have a Tulipan, you know, truck parked in the Tulipan facility, parking lot, and they could still be in violation because it's a self-contained mobile unit that's?
I think you're getting, guys are getting a little confused with the two things. You got mobile vendors, this is the one section. We have another section in the code that is with storage of commercial vehicles, in terms of that part of it. That's your property, and you're storing your vehicle in your property, that's fine because you're not operating a mobile vendor. You're not operating a mobile vendor. Mobile vendor is physically operating, selling goods and services out of the truck.
Okay, but if you have a lease, how are you going to, some of the rights of the owner, the bundle of rights that you have as an, as an owner, you extend that to the lesssee of a property, and so they would have similar rights as the owner. So if they have a lease, then they can, then why, why can't they park there overnight? Because some of those rights that the owner has extend to?
I don't think it's the parking, I think we need to make a distinction, we need operating the mobile business, as opposed to storing.
No, he's saying that if, if I lease, if I'm a mobile vendor?
Right.
And I lease on your property?
Right.
Then?
You can also store there.
I can also store there because you're extending the same protections as a property owner to me as the lesssee.
What are the current rules on that? If someone, if someone wants to store something on private property that they have a lease to do so?
If anybody comes in today and say, you go to the property owner, I want to lease and store construction material, just, just outside of that, my code, zoning code today says, you cannot store construction material, says general commercial, doesn't allow the use to be stored there. Or you can do it in an industrial district, but you have to screen it. So, there's certain provisions that, yes, you can do that, but there's certain provisions in the zoning code that says, yeah, you can store your construction material, you get a lease from the property owner, you can destroy it, but you have to screen it. You have to do certain things with it, because that's what the code requires you do there. So, that's, I understand what you're saying, but certain things are required to do that use there.
That's another part of the code that already exists, it's storage and things like that. But to his point, you're just confirming for us, his example, I think you are, that without keeping this language, that if a Tulipan truck that goes out as a mobile business?
Comes back.
It can come at night and park it on their space, and that's not going to be an issue. That doesn't, anything we're doing?
Yeah, they're not, they're not, it's change, it's not, I think the definition says it's change of goods and services, if I'm not mistaken, and the definition is changing goods and services, that's what?
But what I'm saying, if McDonald's has their truck, and they go to the Tulipan lot, and McDonald's is selling their products in that parking lot, but then they also have a lease, they would also have the right to not only do business there, but to also store their vehicle there.
I don't necessarily agree with that, sir, but again, I'll ask the city attorneys, I mean, we can ask again, they've looked at this, I'm waiting to get comments back from them, and they can give me the comments on that. But, again, this is what several municipalities have done, have included in their codes, basically to say that, because they don't own the property, have to move it.
What am I missing here?
Good example is Dunkin' Donuts. Dunkin' Donuts on Dixie Highway did a big renovation, they had a mobile coffee unit sitting out in the parking lot. Okay, how would that have been treated? They would have to have moved that mobile unit every night?
No, because basically, they, for one, they came into us and asked, we got a temporary business of our building while we actually operating the building. So this is basically our store, while we operating, while we renovating the building. So, it's a little different because it's, Dunkin' Donuts own the property. So they were operating their store, and they came to us, unfortunately, at that time, we didn't have any regulations, so they can actually get it did it, and when they worked, they did do it. So that's a little different than what?
But if you had that regulation in place, would they have, if you had this regulation in place, would they have to have moved that?
No, because again, you're talking Dunkin' Donuts, the store on that property, they came in us and said we're going to do this for six months, and we gave them six months.
So it's only if it's leased, it's only if it's leased to a separate business?
I mean, let me give you an example of what we're talking about. You used, if you ride up and down Broadway, you ride up and down Broadway, probably not now, because I think most of the police has made most of them move, but you ride up and down Broadway, probably six months ago, every property, just about between, what, 36 and going down there, you, you, six food trucks were there. They were there, never moved, never go anywhere, never do anything. So, I guess, and then we start having issues, police-wise. I don't know what those wise, police-wise start having issues. So, now you ride up and down there, so that's the whole thing, those are mobile vendors, they're at a gas station. That's a gas station, a mobile vendor selling tacos is not part of that gas station per se.
Okay.
Because we just asked, we said lease area, it may not be a lease area, the, you know, the owner may say, you can park there, or you can do this. We're just trying to say, the covers, we know exactly where you're going, so we can regulate you in terms of, you're not blocking the highway, you're not blocking the, the fire hydrant, you're not blocking the sidewalk, you're not blocking the drive out, you're not close to ADA space. I think fire requires, if you have propane tanks, you have to be a certain feet back from the actual vehicle and the property line. So there's certain things we need to see and understand, so we can more regulate it efficiently. And that's all we're trying to do, regulate that part safely. I mean, I could bring up the issues that with, with, one, the police about overnight parking, I could bring it up, because that was, staff did have it in there, but they actually said, no, they didn't want, because the issues they have of overnight parking.
But could that taco truck be stored there overnight with the permission of the owner of the gas station, if it was in a spot, a parking spot that was excess parking?
According to this, where the regulations written now, it's no overnight parking. Once you're closed, I mean, you could stay up to four o'clock in the morning, you know, and close for?
But if you have, if you have an ownership interest via your lease, if you have an interest in the property?
I would ask the city attorneys, and then they will, the city attorneys, I'm not their attorney.
Where are they supposed to park?
The attorneys will make the top on that.
I, I keep hearing, they can't be there unless you own the property, but if they don't own the property, when you have to move?
Where would they park?
Usually the case.
Yeah, where, where are they supposed to park?
What happens if it has no wheels?
Well, I mean, being serious, if?
And it's taken out of a mobile vendor, then we look at that, they have to meet the code requirements for a building.
But assuming it's a?
Then they have to meet code requirements for a building, because they're not mobile.
It's a food truck, right? We're talking about food trucks.
It could be food truck, it could be somebody, you know, they see the people side the road with their stands, they put, they put their stands up on, you know, Mother's Day with the flowers, or with the Easter, the baskets, it's all contained within, unnecessary a truck.
Well, but that, you could probably, they could park that in their garage at their house, but like, where, like a food truck, if you can't park it overnight at the place that you're doing business, where would they, where are they supposed to park?
They'd have to go to a commercial parking area somewhere else.
Commercial areas, I'm not sure where they're storing them.
Where there's proper screening.
Most people do storage yards, self-storage yards.
Okay, so they're, they can go park it in a specific area?
It's an expense that they pre, before they found the place, they had that expense.
Got it, okay.
Now they haven't, with the code, it'll force them back to that expense.
Got it, okay, so that makes sense.
Angela, there's, by coincidence, happened to be a food truck on North Congress near the airport, that has picnic tables, got a tent, and everything else. You don't expect him to move the truck?
They're not in the city, so, they're not in the city, so, that's in town, that knows exactly where you are. They're not in the city, so.
Well, that's a good question. If the truck has to be moved, do the picnic tables have to be moved, if they're in the city limits?
In terms of, I mean, pick the picnic tables up, and everything has to be, I wouldn't say move it, but you have to put it somewhere where it's not just sitting out there. That's the whole thing, you're not wanting to sit out there in that area. We have a couple of them like that around here. Now, you got one guy on Broadway, across just to the south of the Family Dollar, he actually set up, he met the code requirements, he put a bathroom in there, he hooked up the pot, he did everything so he can actually be like a stationary business, even though his truck is a mobile per se, but he didn't want to move. So he said, I'm going, I'm on the vacant lot, I'm going to meet setbacks, I put up a fence, so I got some screening, I put, based on billing code, he put in a restroom, so he put in everything that, so he can do, so he can stay and not have to move, so he can, so?
So there is a mechanism where they could come to the city and meet certain, certain requirements and not have to move?
Correct.
You know, I, I think without this, the danger is that, that people could take advantage of this, and it becomes cluttered, and unsightly, and unsafe, and if we don't have a mechanism to regulate it, then?
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing the need for it, I think there's a need for it, I'm just, the nuances of it, of, like, but on the flip side, you know, and this has always been, you know, one of my kind of pet peeves, is a food truck pulls across the street from somebody who's paying 60 bucks a square foot for rent?
Right, right, right.
How is that fair to the, to the business across the street? So, if it's mobile, it should be mobile.
You know, maybe, maybe the thing is, I think a lot of thought went into this, it seems to, to be modeled after other municipal?
Communities.
Yeah, so, so, what I'm thinking is, you know, maybe we get some experience with this, and we come back and revise it. Sometimes you have to start somewhere, and this seems like a good starting point. And as we get more, like many of these codes, once we get more experience and problems come up, or unexpected situations, they come back and revise it, and we learn from our experience. But some of these things the police want, you know? We've seen some of these things, some of them are wonderful, and some of them are not always, are pretty junky and unsafe. They need the tools to, to regulate it. It seems like the city's been flexible in their approach. I think we need some more experience with it, but we have to start somewhere. And this was necessitated because the state passed a law that took away the authority for the city to do what they had been doing before. It's, we're coming back to it as a zoning thing rather than as operation things, to restore some control.
They took it away?
Yeah, that's what she was explaining. So this is, this is a workaround from what the state has done.
Because right now, they're unregulated. Right now, you can go anywhere you want to go in the city. We don't regulate them, they don't get a business tax, the only way they can't go is downtown and public street, otherwise than that?
You know, the challenge would be if someone sets up something really junky downtown or somewhere else too, the city's ability to regulate that may be impaired without this.
I agree.
More experience, and then we'll learn, and we'll fine-tune it.
I think the only thing?
I have a question for our infamous attorney.
Sam's leaving, he's already, he's there at happy hour.
Sounds like, I wasn't expecting this one to be the 20-minute case, but it is.
Under Operations Item 3, there shall be no freestanding signs, sandwich boards. Isn't that a, an impact on, on freedom of speech? First Amendment?
Well, we, we have to look, municipalities and governments also have the right to reasonably?
I can't hear. He said municipalities have the right to reasonably regulate, go ahead, you were starting to say?
Can't hear him though.
I know.
It's not. I can't put a sandwich board at my business, that's just the way the code is.
Yeah.
It's God's will, it's God's will, we don't want your crap.
We'd, we'd have to take a?
We don't sell sandwiches, but you know?
A research, look at it.
Okay.
In addition to First Amendment rights, governments have a right to regulate reasonably in the public's interest. Just looking at what happens, you'll see that signs, you do it all the time, are regulated, and you could suggest that impinges free, of free speech. So we can regulate whether this impinges First Amendment, we'd have to take a closer look.
I guess.
Yeah, but you can regulate the type, the size, and, you know, but not the content, you can't regulate the content.
No one's talking about regulating content.
Well, maybe, I mean?
But I mean, here though?
Can't put everything on a sign.
Yeah, this one we're talking about, the, the signs itself, not the content of the signs.
But, but is the signs real, just limited to signs themselves, or does it include also whatever else they're setting up?
Including, what else you said?
Is it including everything else they're bringing with them, tables, chairs?
I think under this thing, that would not be allowed, correct?
No, you can do tables, chairs, umbrellas.
Just no signs?
Oh, okay.
You can't, you can't put the signs out, again, we can't put the signs, we're saying the sign should be affixed to the actual business, because that's self-contained. But yeah, tables, umbrellas, all that's in there, they can do that. Yes, they can.
We can have about two minutes, hang in there.
You can't put, is it no flags?
We'll take a look, we'll get the law, and I'll take a look at the sandwich board signs, I'll take a look at the?
Maybe one thing you might consider is, at the discretion, whereas the city, they need the city's approval, so we're not banning them, we're simply saying subject, so that way you could do it case-by-case basis, if someone has something tasteful that's not obstructed, it gives the city some flexibility, and then you could work with vendors.
Yeah, as long as the signs aren't creating an obstruction.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are times you could imagine it would be a disaster, or someone puts it in the middle of the sidewalk or something, can't get past. I mean, so it gives you a little flexibility, maybe.
And that's the problem with signs, they end up, once you start with the signs, it starts close to there, then nobody can see, the inch is out, inch is out, next door they know it's, it's on the sidewalk.
All right, guys, let's, looking for a motion?
Motion.
I think we need something a little more than the, I, I know you, I know you have a candle with pets.
I can't get my, I have to?
This is the planning board, we do it more than motions.
Is there, is there a motion someplace?
Approved.
I'll do, I'll do the motion that?
Okay, here we go.
Okay, you do it.
But I recommend that city staff review Item 3 under Operations.
Which is, which one's that one?
This is the signage and sandwich board.
Why do we say that, that we'll, that we approve this with the recommendation they continue to refine that language?
Yeah.
If we could do that.
Okay, I move that the Planning Board recommend that City Commission approval, Code Revision Case Number 25-11, a city-initiated request for a test amendment of the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22 Business and Business Regulations, Article 6, Peddler, oh, Peddlers in Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations. Article 10 Supplemental District Regulations, who provide regulations for mobile vendors.